Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action can complete a blue card in person at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franci Boardroom, or they can complete a virtual blue card that will be posted at noon Monday, August 24, 2020, on the district's news website. Cards, forms received by 7:10 will be read by the Board Secretary. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. Board President reserves the right to limit times. We have one card, thankfully, today, which is on a non-agenda item for action, and I will read that now. That card is from Mr. Subhi Bezi. He said, "I would like clarification on whether the Dearborn School playgrounds are city property or district property. In this case, I am specifically reaching out in regards to McDonald's School. McDonald's Playground has become a problem for the surrounding neighborhoods. Dearborn Police have been called due to the extreme noise levels and messes left behind. Dearborn Police said there was nothing they could do about it. Multiple times, we have seen children run under the jungle gym and slides to urinate. This can potentially become a serious health hazard. It was then, by multiple residents of the neighborhood, taken to Susan DeBajha, as well as Adnan Mohni, hoping for a solution. Thus far, the only change we have seen is a new sign posted saying, 'Park closed from sunset to sunrise,' which has not made any difference whatsoever. We are bringing this complaint to you, the Dearborn Board of Education, hoping something can be done about this."
Did you want to say anything?
Sure.
I can if you want. Go ahead.
Or it's up to you.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, we are aware of the situation, and I was on an email with President DeBajha and Chief Hadad and others, and Dr. Mohni, and we've also had Mark Andrews involved. And we made sure that we have additional staff out there cleaning when we see, you know, things that are going on. The unfortunate thing is, we don't have staff that are there all the time into the evening, and we made a decision that we were going to keep our playgrounds open for the community. So, we ask, you know, we do our best to try to ensure, when we're there, to make sure that, obviously, if our students and others are following the rules, and then, you know, if someone was doing something illegal, I mean, you'd have to, you know, contact authorities, because, like I said, they're not on, we don't have the ability to be there monitoring it all night. Having said that, we respect the community, and, you know, we want to help, we want to try to help, and we want to do our best and work with people, and we would ask the community to help us. So, one of the things, when we made the decision to open it in a COVID situation, is to, you know, follow the rules, like we are. You know, we're following the rules, we're social distancing, those kind of things, and my understanding is that was some of the concern. So, we need people to do the right thing and work together, and maybe, maybe it's something for the neighborhood, I know Trustee Thorpe, you and I talked, but maybe even the neighborhood associations to get involved in their neighborhood in trying to make a change. And again, we'll be there with them, from administration, helping as much as we can, and we'll definitely do our best to try to make change. And I can tell you, our staff has already intervened, not just the signs, but with the cleaning and other things that are going, you know, that are going on within those playgrounds.
To answer the question is, yes. Those playgrounds are Dearborn Public Schools' property. So, that was good, that was the right information, I believe President DeBajha told the neighbors. But, no, if there's anything, if there is illegal activities going on at the playground or in the streets or at a city park, you definitely should call the police. If the police is telling you that there's nothing they can do, if there's something going on there, if somebody's, I guess, the word, urinating, no, the police should be able to do something. Cleaning the playground, we have 33 buildings, playgrounds, that we have people that constantly clean the playgrounds. I just met with a friend of mine at one of the city parks, and it was not in good shape, but the next day, I walked over there, because I usually walk around the track, and it was cleaned up. So, it was the city's responsibility to clean that park. It is our responsibility, Dearborn Public Schools, to maintain and keep those parks clean. But if there is any illegal activity going on that the neighborhoods are seeing, yeah, by all means, call the police department. The other thing is, since it's McDonald's School, I am aware that there's a strong, strong neighborhood association in the area. So, I will reach out to one of their officers and to see what is it that, you know, what is it that they can help out with, since it seems to be an isolated playground that we're talking about, that it keeps coming up. So, I think, I think, you know, I didn't catch the name, Madam Secretary.
President Barry.
I didn't catch the name of the person who brought the card. You're muted.
Subhi Bezi.
Mr. Bezi, okay, Mr. Bezi, yeah, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Did you have something?
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe, please.
President Barry, can I just add one?
Go ahead, Trustee Pachukov.
There is a law on Dearborn Books called the Parental Responsibility Law, and the police department, if they're called in, and it's a minor child that is acting disrespectfully in the community, they can take that child back home, and the parent themselves can receive a ticket. So, I would like to put it out there to all parents to pay attention to what their children are doing when they leave the home, that they do have a legal obligation to monitor their children's behavior, and to make sure that they understand that they have a responsibility to ensure that they're not acting in a way, in a manner that requires police intervention in the first place.
Sure. Thank you. Trustee Thorpe?
One of the strengths of Dearborn is the neighborhoods, and any of us, we're probably always looking out for our neighbors' houses as well as ours, if they're not around. So, we would hope that the people that live closest to our buildings are keeping an eye on them and letting us know, or letting the police know if there's something that's going on that needs attention. Also, I believe that our City Relations Committee has been talking with the city as we are continuing to add more and more surveillance cameras to our properties, and maybe at some point, that can also help us try to identify if there are repeat problems at some of our buildings.
Yeah, thank you. You know what, I'd like to make a follow-up with a comment, too, that a couple of weeks ago, I drove by probably six to eight of our playgrounds, very clean, our maintenance people do a great job, our children, some with parents, some without, were enjoying the parks. So, this is a very isolated incident. We will get to it, even if we have to, I'll talk to Dr. Maleko after the meeting, if we have to do something a little extra, just, it seems like that's the only place that's happening. But there's, that's, that's the beauty of Dearborn, our parks, our pools, our playgrounds. So, we don't want to get to the point where we start shutting down playgrounds and shutting down, you know, city parks and city pools, just because you might have, you know, maybe a couple of kids that are, you know, troublemakers. But like Trustee Pachukov said, yeah, if your kids aren't behaving, yeah, you will get called out by the police, or if we have, if we find out, if Dr. Mohni finds out, recognizes any students, we will reach out to their parents and do our part. So, thank you.
One comment.
Dr. Maleko, go ahead.
I just spoke to Mr. Wall, and one thing we can do, which we have routine checks that are going on right now across the district, we don't have the funding and the ability to have security officers 24/7 at every location, but what we can do, and we did this during the shutdown, and we continue to do checks at every building, so we can do extra checks at McDonald's, and maybe that will help, too, to have an extra present. Again, it wouldn't be 24/7, but, you know, our security companies can go and just make sure and check out what's going on over there, and maybe help and work with the police. So, that's another thing, I just spoke to Mr. Wall.
Yeah, I can tell you that when I did take that drive a couple of weeks ago at two different locations, I did see one of our security, I believe those trucks, those little trucks, and I spoke to one of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she explained to me what she was doing there. So, yeah, we'll, we'll keep doing our part, so, thank you, Mr. Bezi. Let's see, where are we at here? You said there was only one, right?
Action items.
That was the only one? So, we'll go ahead and next item, please, then.
Action items, are there any agenda items on this agenda which Board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below, and I see Trustee Pachukov raising her hand.
Trustee Pachukov.
I only have, I don't need a poll, but I do have a question on item four, with the teletherapy.
Okay.
Hopefully, Mr. Saley hasn't left the building.
Okay. Are there any more?
I have a question about seven.
Okay, we'll wait till four and seven. Okay. Madam Secretary, go ahead, please.
I would just like to note that there are three supplements, 13, 14, and 15. So, at this time, move that action items numbered one through 15 be approved as recommended in this agenda. Still moved?
So moved. Support.
So, the motion was moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Pachukov. We'll go right ahead to Trustee Pachukov regarding number four.
Dr. Maleko, I don't know if Mr. Saley is still available or not, so if he's not, possibly, you could answer the question. The teletherapy program that we're going to be purchasing, what therapies does this utilize?
I believe Mr. Saley's there.
Does anybody know?
I'm gonna ask him to jump in, if he could.
Jump in.
He's there. Can you repeat that question, Trustee?
While we're waiting for him, I would like to know that I've heard from other people.
Mr. Saley, can I ask now, jump in, if he could? Oh, there's a.
What, what therapies does this cover? What types of therapy does this teletherapy cover?
Okay, greeting, Ms. Pachukov. So, basically, what Presence Learning involves is, one, it gives, provides both a HIPAA and FERPA compliant video conferencing availabilities. In addition, it's going to provide our staff with teletherapy and training with school social work services, occupational therapy services, and speech and language pathology services. There's also an aspect into it to where it also provides training for some of our psychologists and some of our teachers to actually do cognitive testing for special education through a distance. Now, we've decided that we're not going to train every single school psychologist in the ability to do some of the testing through a distance. Our psychologists actually came together a couple of weeks ago and felt it would be best to kind of do the in-person testing just for validity purposes, and they just kind of felt more comfortable going in that specific route. It also provides, actually, believe it or not, some great training for our parents, and the training comes in both English and Arabic as well.
Is there, does there need to be anything other than a laptop in the family home in order to utilize this?
Nope, for the, for the specific therapy purposes, no. They would just need a, they would need a Chromebook or something along those lines, and they would be fine, which we would definitely apply to family, we would provide to families if they needed.
Right, and we're doing that for everybody. I just want to make sure that there isn't some kind of therapies that require additional support for their families in order to take advantage of this particular program?
No, that's why we're really, really excited, and we're excited to what it's going to do for not only our student population, but the support it's going to provide our staff as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Dr. Mead, is there a thumbs up, or did you have a question?
I'm just happy with what.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure, are there any other questions on this action item? If not, we'll go to our Trustee Moser.
I would just like to make a quick note.
Go ahead, Trustee Lane.
I have heard from people in other districts around the country that there is a problem already in students showing up for classes, so I have a lot of concerns about the people that have the greatest need actually not being there for services and for classes. That's going to be something, the students have, have talked about this and referenced it a little bit, but it's going to be a big problem in the next year.
Thank you. We'll go ahead to our Trustee Moser regarding action item number seven.
Yeah, I'd like to know quickly why we're waiting six months for this bid. Is it taking so much time? Is it because of the complexity?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We actually bid this out to break down the services. This includes our key card access, our security systems, our burglar alarm, and our fire system. So, there's four large projects that this include. Now, we've been with this company for 10 years, over 10 years. And so, what we're finding now to rebid it, we rebid it once, and we only had two vendors bid, and we figured with this large of a project, we could not bring that to the board appropriately for that kind of a dollar value, because this project itself is, you know, well over a million dollars when you add all four of those together, because this handles the installation and handles the monitoring and repair. So, it's a large project, and there's a lot of requirements. So, to kind of, when we look at this bid, we're going to probably break this down from one vendor into multiple vendors. And once we kind of get through the evaluation of the bid, which is very complex, that eventually we'll have to actually transition to the new vendor. So, this is not something that can get done in one month. So, that's why we asked for the four- to five-month extension, so we can get through the process and have a nice, clean conversion, and not try to struggle trying to cut ties with a company and kind of go another way, if that's the case. They may be the successful vendor, we don't know yet, the bids are being evaluated right now.
So, this is really more of an up to six months? You're thinking that would be the longest amount of time?
Correct. Yeah, if we get done sooner, especially with students not in the building as much, we might be able to convert faster. But we don't want to come back to every month and say, we need another month, and so we figured at least a four-month extension is what we're going to at least to make sure we get through this.
Good. Trustee Moser, you good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Are there any other questions on any of the action items? I can't see the screen, so if there are, just jump in.
No.
If not, then, are there any more questions? We'll just go ahead. Madam Secretary, do you have a roll call vote on the motion?
Lane, yes. McDonald?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Pachukov?
Thorpe?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes, thank you. Please attach unanimous roll call vote to the affirmative. Madam Secretary, can we have the summary of agenda action items?
Summary of agenda action items, number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of blanket order per Board Report 20 hyphen 11. Number three, approval of contract communities in schools, CIS. Number four, approval of contract to Presence Learning, Inc. Number five, approval of contract to Kachi Soccer, MoElsi. Number six, approval of contract to Green Dream International. Number seven, approval of contract to JCI, which is Johnson Controls. Numbers eight through 10, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 11, approval of 2020 summer graduates. Number 12, approval of donations. Number 13, appointment of Principal Mohammed Abdelfatah, Snow Elementary. Number 14, approval of Assistant Principal, Mrs. Mary Timp, to Henry Ford Elementary. Number 15, approval of Coordinator One Special Education, Wilanda Taylor.
I think the least we can do is applaud our summer graduates. Congratulations, summer graduates. I'll turn it over to Dr. Maleko, I believe he has a few introductions.
Yes. Yes, thank you so much, President Barry. So, I believe we have Wilanda Taylor, who is on the screen. I'm going to ask her to come in and make a few comments. We want to congratulate her on her appointment, if we can show a round of applause for her. And we'll see if she can come and make a couple of comments.
I see, yeah.
Oh, is she in there? This position is being funded by the Act 18 Special Education out of the county, and so it's not actually coming to the general fund, but it's definitely needed, given where we are. We just heard about all the trauma-informed learning and all the things going on, so we're very excited to have Wilanda.
Good evening to all of the Board members and Dearborn Public Schools. This is a great honor and a great opportunity. I take it, and I come with much loyalty. I'm passionate, and I'm excited about what this year is bringing, and I'm really happy about joining such a great special education team.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you. So, next, we have, oh, great, wonderful, Wilanda. We have Ms. Mary Timp, the Assistant Principal at Henry Ford, if we can show appreciation for her as she gets on, and congratulations. Mary and I got hired together as teachers at Salida many years ago.
We did.
Go ahead, Mary, I'll let you make a few.
I would like to thank Dr. Maleko, the entire Board, and all of my many, many wonderful mentors that I have in the district. Everybody's been very supportive, and I'm very happy to be joining Henry Ford, I can't wait.
Congratulations.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
And last, we have Mohammed Abdelfatah. He is the Principal of Snow. I do want to mention that he does not start until October 1. This was the plan for a phase in with the COVID situation, and so we have Ms. Alcadre starting in Human Resources on October 1, and we did it in a budget-savings manner through reductions of different positions in HR, but we deliberately wanted to give a transition for him, working with Ms. Alcadre, and also where he's going to be leaving his school at Woodworth. So, Mohammed, congratulations, let's give him a big round of applause, too. And I'll let him make a few comments. Like Ms. Iman Ahmed, last year, I'm able to say that I've actually hired him three times, as a teacher, assistant principal, and now a principal, so, proud of that.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko, members of the Board. Thank you for entrusting me, and thank you for your confidence you've invested in me. Really excited to be the next principal at Snow Elementary, it's an honor to be part of the board organization. As a resident at Dearborn, a former student, teacher, administrator, and now a parent of two that are heading on a similar path, I look forward to building the positive relationships at Snow Elementary and live in that community. I am looking forward to this new chapter in my career, and thank you for the opportunity.
Congratulations, Mohammed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to the three of you.
Next item, please.
There are no discussion items, so the next item will be Board of Education Business acknowledgment of correspondence.
Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
I don't believe we have any.
Trustee Pachukov is going to report for the pre-audit at the college.
Okay, yes. Go ahead, Trustee Pachukov.
Yeah, while, thank you. While we don't normally try to mix college and P-12, we did it last, at the last meeting for the college, so it's a fair trade, we decided we wanted to just let everybody know that we did have a pre-audit committee meeting today, and the reason we wanted to report it out today was because there's some time-sensitive opportunities. The Plant Moran is our audit organization, and they laid out the scope and the calendar for their audit procedures, where they do a risk assessment of our financial statement, and they don't do a deep dive, but rather do a randomized assessment of all of the components of a financial statement for the college, which is a routine yearly audit. That being said, if anybody has, I already sent the whole Board the contact information of the auditors, if anybody from the Board has any specific issue that they would like looked at, please contact the auditors, and I believe it's been practice for us to also share that information publicly on our webpage for the college, so that if there's anybody in the college community who, who has a concern, that they'd like to have a conversation with the auditors to investigate, this would be the time to do it.
Thank you. I believe that's it for reports. Next item, please.
Next item, Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Again, I can't see, so if anybody out there has any comments, just go right ahead, please. Dr. Maleko, neither?
One thing I do just want to say again, congratulations to our summer graduates. And one thing I heard today on the news that was a little disturbing, and once again, it just proves that we don't know much about COVID, is that there is thought that we have the first case of a reinfection, and it may be of a different strain or mutated strain of COVID that happened in Hong Kong. So, I just want to say that I really stand by the decision that the Board made for us to be cautious about what we're doing. There's just too much that we don't know and too much that's at stake. So, again, we need the community's help to keep everything as contained as possible. So, again, the three W's, I just want to enforce, wear your mask, wash your hands, and watch your distance, and let's all take care of each other.
Thank you. Dr. Maleko, do you have any?
I would note, taking on Trustee McDonald's comment, that the shutdown of many universities has also reaffirmed to me that we can pretty much lean on behavior not only complying. And that, that was our concern, that everybody wouldn't follow the rules and that people might compromise, and that's been the case at a lot of universities. So, I do also agree with Trustee McDonald that we made the right decision to start slowly, start safely, start softly.
Go ahead. Thank you, President Barry. So, I want to just mention, and I appreciate President Barry, he joined me this morning with Ms. Faraj and Ms. O'Ranney, where we welcomed our new staff, our teachers. It's the first time I told the teachers, I remember being there 24 years ago in their shoes, but I was not in a virtual, online situation. So, I want to thank President Barry for welcoming the staff, and we're very excited that we don't have as many new staff as we normally do, but we're here, and we have great staff in Dearborn Public Schools. That's what I want to say, is that I want to just, a message out to the community, we know we're going to have challenges ahead. We know there's stresses on families, we know there's stresses on staff, community members, Board members, there's stresses on administration, superintendents, but it's okay, we're going to get through it together. We've got a great community, and that's what I said today, and Trustee Barry, is that that's why I've been in Dearborn Public Schools 25 years, I've never applied anywhere else. You know, this is a great community, and we have great people that do great things. Our teachers are going to step up, I know our community members, I talked about our parents that work with us. Now, will there be challenges? Is it going to be perfect? No. The reality is that we're probably going to have some bumps as we move forward, but we are excited that our students are going to start, and we ask for patience of individuals, and we understand that there's going to be stresses on families. So, all I ask is that we try to work together, because really, we all want what is best for our students in Dearborn Public Schools. Of course, parents, first and foremost, for their children, but for me, I'm responsible for the 21,000 students, and I take that very seriously, as I know the Board does. And I also want to say I appreciate the support of the Board of Education, and I know, I believe President Calvalluna feels the same way, and I've mentioned this to President Barry and others, because these have been challenging times over the last six months, and without your support, we really wouldn't have got through it. I do feel supported, I do feel like I'm making decisions, and there may, sometimes we can have disagreements in the community decisions, but you've got to make those tough decisions, and my, my decisions have been a little bit more directional with my team at times, and I know the Board has backed it. And so, we're going to have to, we're going to have more months of difficult decisions ahead, and I know we're up for the challenge. I also know, as I said, that we're going to have some, some struggles, but we're going to get through it, I'm confident in that, and we have a great team. So, I want to thank everyone in the entire school community, and looking forward to our students starting, and that, you know, it's going to be a soft start, so not to get worried, but over the first couple of weeks, I said it, you know, we've got to just kind of relax with the first couple of weeks and understand we're going to learn some different things as we go forward, but we're there with you together. And I also want to thank all the parents, including staff members that are parents in the community.
I completely agree with Trustee Patrick, Trustee Lane and Trustee McDonald's comments. Yeah, there's no doubt in my mind that we're doing the right thing moving forward. Dr. Maleko, are there going to be challenges? Yes, of course, and we also had that discussion earlier today. A week from today, we'll be opening up our schools, are we going to run into things? And under normal circumstances, things come up the first day, the first week, so, yes, there will be. So, the parents I spoke to today, and the last few weeks, the staff members I spoke to, are we like 100% sure things are going to go as we planned the first day? Probably not. But we will learn from the first day, do better the second day, and moving forward, we will, we will get it to the point where, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that our staff and our administrators are providing the best possible education to our students. So... So good luck to our students this year. Staff, we thank you for what you're doing. Parents, all we ask for is your patience the next couple of weeks, so, thank you. Unless there's anything else, next item, please.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Moser?
I have.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Trustee McDonald.
I just wanted to ask Mr. Wall something, and I don't know if he wants to address it here, or maybe in one of our small meetings. I know that there was just an avenue, a revenue estimating conference recently, and I was wondering if there was any information, good or otherwise, he wanted to share with us.
He's coming up, there was, yeah, several memo, notifications that came out today.
Yes, it was held today from, from three to about four-thirty. It was good news, the economy is doing better than what they projected in May, which was good, because it reduced the shortfall that they estimated back from what we compared to last January, when the governor started the whole, you know, budgetary process. We're going to get more information out tomorrow. The legislators, you know, the, from my hearing, it's like roughly about forty percent better than it was back in May. But the numbers were hard to read on the screen, because they were very fuzzy. They didn't have good technology at the state when they're presenting. So we'll get the graphs tomorrow, and it'll be in my board memo update this week to give you a more clear detail.
Thank you, so, Trustee Moser?
Yeah, I, throughout the recommendations that came forwards, and obviously us going virtually, what really keeps me up at night is special ed students, and how are they going to deal with learning virtually? I would like to get a report on how specifically we're handling students who have special ed, or a report even that is informational to the parents as far as the learning labs, and how they're going to be conducted. So, is that clear?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Maybe some of that, Dr. Dr. Moleko, some of that could inform the decision each month on whether we proceed with reopening or learning labs or in-person or, or all of that. I mean, that feedback is going to be really important to us, the learning labs feedback.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Trustee Lane. Trustee Petrichoff, do you have something to add, or just waving at me? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Future virtual and in-person meeting dates. Mondays, September fourteenth, twenty-twenty, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, seven PM, at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Franchi Boardroom, following the guidelines of the Governor's Executive Order, and virtually available live for viewing via YouTube Live, Facebook Live, and Cable Channel nineteen, or WOW Channel fifteen. Mondays, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty, HFC Meeting, seven PM via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at www.hfc. I thought that was HFCC.
C, yeah. That's some typo there.
Yeah, okay, ED, dot edu, slash board meeting schedule.
Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.